Sit, Alderman. There, she's ready. Don't they go to him down here, Mike? Yeah. There she is. Congratulations all. Yep, Barbara's next. There you are. We got a couple minutes? No, one minute now, Steve. Oh, thank you. All right, we'll call the common council meeting to order for the meeting of Tuesday, April 17th, 2018. First level roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Here.
Lorik.
Here.
Dukenyak.
Here.
Toman.
Here.
Gail.
Here.
Guzekowski.
Here. Point of order on behalf of Mayor Mikewich, he is unfortunately traveling out of state today. And of note, he was sworn in this past Friday, so congratulations go out to Mayor Dan. I will maintain my vote for the residents of the 5th District tonight as Alderman. And from that, from there, we'll move on to the pledge of allegiance. Kristo.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three is the approval of the minutes from the meeting, common council meeting of April 2nd, 2018. I trust you all had a chance to take a look at those. Any corrections, additions, deletions? Great, if not, I'll take a motion on that.
Kowalski make a motion to approve the minutes of April 2nd, 2018.
Dukenyak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Lorik.
I'm Steens.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Item number four is the election of the common council president. And I will turn that over to City Attorney Melissa Carles for procedures and such.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Congratulations to our newly and reelected officials and common council members. We have had this discussion before, but in terms of this election of common council president by statute, the election of an officer of the council may be done by a paper ballot. This is the only time for this body where there can be a secret ballot. By statute, this would be the only opportunity where I would direct then that the chair open up the floor for nominations. Once all nominations are made, there should be a motion to close those nominations. Or if there is only one nomination, there could be a motion to close the nominations and cast a unanimous ballot, after which there could be a roll call.
All right, with that said, I will open the floor to nominations for common council president.
All right, Dukenyak moved to reelect Alderman Ken Gail as common council president.
Kirkowski, second. If there is such a thing.
Any additional nominations?
I'm gonna make a motion to close the nominations.
Great, thank you. Do we have a second on that?
Oracle, second.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye. They didn't need to take a ballot. Paper ballot, please.
He voted for himself.
No, I made a motion to close.
Can I believe Melissa said that we could someone make a motion?
Someone wants to.
No, Kirkowski make a motion to close the nominations and cast a single ballot for...
Nominations being closed.
Well, okay, so I'll make a motion to cast a single ballot for...
We don't have to do that.
...and go. Well, we talked about it, so we're just trying to make sure everything is covered.
Make your motion.
I made my motion. To cast a single ballot for Ken Gail.
Oracle, second.
All in favor? All right, roll call, please.
Alderman Toman. Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Motion, carry.
Does that carry without unanimous?
Yes, a majority vote.
Okay. All right, carry. Carry on then. All right, item number five then. You good, Mike?
Sure. Are you the new common?
I don't know.
Do we congratulate you now?
Oh, if we...
We have not done that before.
Once it's... No, we haven't. That's fine.
My first time since I've been here that we only had one candidate, so we...
Yeah, so there's no need to cast a ballot.
There's no need for paper ballot.
Okay.
Good? Yes. All right, then we'll move on to item number five. Resolution and accommodation to Robert Layley, retiring equipment operator. Bob is not in the audience, so he'll have his citation presented to him. Catherine, we need to take a motion or move on that? Great, great. We'll take a motion on item number five then.
Got a motion to hold it?
No, no, we're not, we're not gonna, just for expediency.
Oh, okay.
Given the numbers, we're just gonna issue them to the recipient here.
Toman will make a motion to adopt resolution number 11927, resolution of commendation to Robert Layley, retiring equipment operator.
Guzekowski, second.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye. Our congratulations to Bob and a healthy and happy retirement. Item number six is a resolution, accommodation to Caesar Geiger, retiring information technology manager. Catherine, I think we would read that one on the record.
Resolution number 11928-041718, resolution accommodation to Caesar F. Geiger. Whereas Caesar F. Geiger began his employment with the city of Oak Creek on April 13th, 1998, as the information technology manager. And whereas Caesar was a very effective employee during his years of service with the city of Oak Creek, answering many calls for service and providing immeasurable services to the city. And whereas Caesar was involved in countless rollouts of new software programs, updates, and computer equipment, as well as updates of the city's website. And whereas Caesar was instrumental in the installation of fiber optic lines between the various city buildings, providing and enabling high-speed connectivity throughout. And whereas always thinking about the big picture, Caesar was integral in outsourcing of Oak Creek's information technology department to South Milwaukee, providing their city with various IT needs and personnel. And whereas Caesar was involved in the successful consolidation of the city of St. Francis Police, ambulance, and fire-related dispatch services with Oak Creek. And whereas Caesar was a member of countless committees, including city facility space needs, emergency management, and strategic planning committees. And whereas Caesar received a superior performance award for being part of the design and construction review team for the new civic center complex, meeting significant organizational goals, priorities, and deadlines. And whereas Caesar retired from his position of information technology manager with the city of Oak Creek effective April 13th, 2018, completing 20 years of full-time service to the city of Oak Creek. Now therefore be it resolved with the, that the best wishes for good health and happiness be extended to Caesar and his family in his retirement years. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread upon the minutes of this meeting, and the city clerk be and is hereby directed to transmit a suitable copy thereof to Caesar F. Geiger. Cast and adopted the 17th day of April, 2018.
Thank you, Catherine.
You're welcome.
A motion on item number six.
Dukenyak moved to approve resolution number 11928-041718, resolution of commendation to Caesar F. Geiger, retiring information technology manager.
Oracle, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye. And our thanks once again to Caesar, Caesar for his very dedicated service and his invaluable service in our IT department and needs. There's obviously a mind-numbing and very, very time-consuming role he played, and we appreciate his service to the community. Item number seven. Item number seven is a congratulations to Davis B. Rapinski for receiving the Eagle Scout Award. Mayor Dan will appear at David's Court of Honor, so we're gonna skip actually reciting that into the record, so we'll need a motion on item number seven.
Kowalski make a motion to adopt council proclamation number 18-03, congratulations to Davis B. Rapinski for receiving the Eagle Scout Award. Oracle, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye. Item number eight is a council proclamation to Steve Taylor for dedicated service to Cityville Creek as county supervisor for District Number Nine. Steve's not here tonight, so we will have that signed and sent off to him. We want to obviously send our thanks out to him for his dedicated service to the city of Oak Creek, obviously his significant work of late. And the original land swap, the tri-party arrangement that set this, this project in motion, the 13th Street reconstruction project, the significant county contribution to the IKEA parcel, and obviously most recently the Ryan Rome Business Park County Land Swap, which is gonna lead to some significant development opportunities, so we appreciate his service. So we'll need a motion on item number eight.
Kowalski make a motion that the council adopt proclamation number 18-04 to Steve Taylor for dedicated service to the city of Oak Creek as county supervisor for District Nine.
Guzekowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye. And item number nine is a council proclamation, congratulations to the American Legion, Oak Creek Women's Auxiliary, and Sons of the American Legion, Oak Creek Lions Club, and Oak Creek Lions Community Foundation. Catherine, I'll have you read that into the record.
Council proclamation number 18-05, congratulations to the American Legion, Oak Creek Women's Auxiliary, Sons of American Legion, Oak Creek Lions Club, and the Oak Creek Lions Community Foundation. Whereas the American Legion is proudly celebrating 100 years of service, and whereas the Lions Club is celebrating the 60th anniversary of service. And whereas over the years, the American Legion has developed a strong relation with the local community, and whereas these organizations were closely with community leaders, school board, churches, the Salvation Army, and the police and fire departments. And whereas these organizations have raised and donated over $3.25 million to local, state, and international humanitarian projects and service. And whereas each of these organizations are included in helping veterans, differently-abled children and adults with special needs, and whereas service extends to donations to local food pantries, youth sport organizations, Eagle Scout projects, Girl and Boy Scout events, blind veterans luncheon, Christmas with Santa, and many, many more. And whereas a celebration event is planned at the American Legion Post 434 on April 28th, 2018. And whereas the celebration will promote successful relationships and meeting community needs now and in the future. And whereas the Oak Creek Common Council wishes to recognize the American Legion, the Oak Creek Women's Auxiliary, Sons of American Legion, the Oak Creek Lions Club, and the Oak Creek Community Foundation for their dedicated service to the community. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and common council of the city of Oak Creek hereby extend their congratulations to these organizations. Be it further resolved that the proclamation be spread upon the minutes of this meeting, and the city clerk be and she is hereby directed to transmit a suitable copy to the American Legion Post 434 and the Oak Creek Lions Club dated the 17th day of April, 2018.
Thank you, Catherine. Anyone wanna make a comment?
Just being a part of an organization that has worked with the Lions Club and the Legion Post for the past 18, 19, 20 years, but I can't tell you what a valuable community resource those organizations are. Many thanks to longtime member, Lions Club member, Mike Toman, Chris Guzekowski, a new member of the Lions Club, and I believe that Alderman Dan is now a, or Mayor Dan, excuse me, is a new member of the Lions Club as well. Again, perform invaluable services and dedicate themselves to our community, and they truly do make our community a better place. They're, oh, Steve?
I just wanted, last year, Oak Creek Little League was hosting a state tournament, and I went to Rich, and he went to the Lions Club, and they provided some financial help to that because they are a youth baseball organization, so...
Steve, that was the Oak Creek Kiwanis Club.
Okay, well then...
Another Oak Creek club.
Yes, another service organization that dedicates themselves...
That you belong to.
Yes.
Okay, well, Richard...
To our community.
I apologize for that.
You're only a year off because the year, the year before we did donate to the...
Oh, very good, okay.
So you're only a year off.
You know, I'm not in my right mind tonight because of all the snow. I should be umpiring right now. And, but I would also say that the Lions Club, and I'm sure I'm right on this one, comes out to the shred event and helps out, so, you know. Like, true umpire, I got half of the, half of it right tonight. All right, thank you.
Thank you, and truly a great organizations in the city, and working, working with the residents out there makes this, this community a better place to be. Do we take a vote on that already?
Can't on?
No. Roll call, please. Oh, we didn't have a motion yet?
Dukenyak will move to approve council proclamation number 18-05, congratulations to the American Legion, the Oak Creek Women's Auxiliary, Sons of the American Legion, Oak Creek Lions Club, and the Oak Creek Lions Club Community Foundation. Guzekowski, second.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye. Great, thank you. Item number 10 is a public hearing to consider requests submitted by Dorian Boyland, Boyland Properties, Oak Creek LLC for a conditional use permit for automotive sales and service with a private car wash facility on the properties at 7008 and 7018 South 27th Street and 2500 West Rossin Avenue. Doug, or Catherine, sorry, read it into the record officially.
Certainly. Public hearing number one is to consider a request submitted by Dorian Boyland, Boyland Properties, Oak Creek LLC for a conditional use permit for automotive sales and service with a private car wash facility on the properties of 7008 and 7018 South 27th Street and 2500 West Rossin Avenue. The applicant is Dorian Boyland, Boyland Properties, Oak Creek LLC. Property owner is Boyland Properties, Oak Creek LLC. There follows the legal description, date of notice, March 21st, 2018.
Great, now I think we'll turn it over to Doug.
All right, one more, please. I thought we had this... There we go. Thank you, good evening. I am Doug Seymour. I'm the director of community development for the city of Oak Creek, and this is a public hearing and a request for a conditional use permit for the properties of 7008 and 7018 South 27th Street and 2500 West Rossin Avenue for an automotive dealership, I'm sorry, automotive sales and service, along with a private car wash facility. Back in June of 2016, the city reviewed and approved a similar request for a conditional use permit for this, for these properties as noted above. At that time, there was a stipulation in the conditions and restrictions that set a, a date of expiration, in essence, should the project not proceed within 12 months of the date of approval of the common council ordinance, approving conditional use permit. That did not occur for a number of reasons. However, the applicants have continued to work towards the development of that site for an automotive dealership and have resubmitted the conditional use permit application and have gone through the process with the plan commission with staff to bring that back to the city for review. This property, there were some rezonings that were previously accomplished as a part of this process, is part of the 27th Street overlay district. And as such, there are a number of certain standards and additional requirements that need to be met for development within that zoning district. And while this is not a review of the site and building plans, as that will come back to the plan commission, should this, this conditional use permit be granted, there are a few things of note that the commission, I'm sorry, the council, may wish to just review, and those are contained in the staff report. But the one thing I will note is that there is an officially mapped street that was put on the map, which actually connected Rossin Avenue and Riverwood Drive ran through this property, as well as several other properties in that 27th Street district. And at that point, when the land is subdivided, in this case combined via certified survey map, it would have been typical to dedicate that right-of-way and have a development agreement for the improvement of that. However, given the, the status of that roadway and the uncertainty surrounding that, at least previously, the Plan Commission, the council, did not require that to go in at the time of approval. And as is the case here, they're requesting a similar amendment, or not amendment, to the condition, the conditional use permit that essentially would, they would, you know, provide for the layout of that future map street, but they would not actually put it in until the street would go in. So we don't want to necessarily have a street that's in there which doesn't go anywhere, it doesn't serve any purpose. So they are willing to do their part for the dedication and construction of that roadway. However, it just doesn't make sense to do that absent a plan to put the entire street in. The Plan Commission has reviewed the conditional use permit again, and they have recommended to the common council that the conditional use permit be granted, subject to the conditions and restrictions that are before you this evening. I do have some exhibits, should the council be interested or the public be interested, showing some of the site layout, proposed site layout, as well as some architectural elevations. But with that, it would be the commission's recommendation that the council approve the conditional use permit. And with that being said, this being a public hearing, I would ask that anyone who has any questions or comments regarding the proposed conditional use permit for automotive sales and service and a private car wash, to please fill out an appearance form. When the clerk reads your name, please proceed to the podium and address your questions and/or comments to the common council. This public hearing is now open.
Thank you, Doug. There'll be three calls for commentary from the public during the public hearing. Consider this your first call for commentary? And if you're good, yeah. So your name and address for the record.
My name's Ed Losowski. I'm at 6988 South 27th Street, Oak Creek. Been an Oak Creek member before we were a city. We're way back, so I've been at that property too a long time. So I just want to say, I'm concerned about the traffic coming onto 27th Street and the car wash having the water coming onto the, on the highway. It's a highway, 27th Street, it's Highway 41. It's a state highway. I'm concerned about the water coming on there, and then in the wintertime, freezing, having a problem there. That's a heavily-traveled roadway. I hope you take all that into consideration. As you know, it's a very high, people come off of I-94, down by Highway 100, they come off of that, off the expressway there, they zoom right onto 27th Street, they zoom down 27th Street. So it becomes very heavily traveled, very fast. So like I said, I've been living out there before we were a city. So I know the area, and I know us too.
Okay? Thank you for your comments.
My concern is the, the safety, the water coming on the street there, where the car wash is, and that freezing in the wintertime especially, and even slippery and wet, because that's a heavily-traveled road, very heavy. Monards and everybody there. So, okay?
Great, thank you for your comments.
Okay, we can sit here.
Doug, sorry?
And maybe I can address those comments. 27th Street, State Highway 241 now, used to be 41, certainly is a heavily-traveled facility and then actually has been upgraded in the last couple of years. Part of the, the review of this is working with the state, being that they have jurisdiction over 27th Street, as well as Milwaukee County, to find the appropriate driveway locations and access for this. The access for this actually was determined many years ago, not many, but several years ago, as part of an access management plan for 27th Street that was agreed to by the city, the state, and Milwaukee County. So those locations have been set very, very purposefully with safety in mind, and part of the, the site plan will reflect that. The, just to clarify too, the car wash, it's not, and you and I couldn't just drive up there and get our cars washed. That's for the, when the, you know, if their vehicles in for service, I'm sure as part of their, their service package to their customers, they'll wash your car before you leave it. I think that's pretty common. But it's not like a scrubber dub or anything like that, where it's got a high volume of cars that are pulling it off the street from the public that are utilized in that service. But I think we're okay there.
Yes, sir. We did, we did talk about that at the Plan Commission as well. That was one of the topics of discussion that Mr. Losowski brought up, and this is for, the, the car wash is for the use of the dealership only. It's, it's not for public use. They'll have to go down the street to the...
All right, thanks, Doug.
Wherever they're going.
But, and Chris, my question would be, going down the street, was there information or data provided by the police department? There is another car wash that is just north of there.
Yes.
Right.
Are there issues with safety or icing from that location that anyone is aware of?
Not that I'm aware of, and actually that one is, there's at least an adequate distance between the, the exit bay and the street. I know that, for instance, the closest one on Howell Avenue in Milwaukee, the exit is very close to the street. Yes, that does create problems, nothing that I certainly would anticipate that would be happening in this instance.
Okay, thank you. You're not gonna have the same amount of volume.
Right, and that's, I guess that was my point regarding a, a safety concern or issue. If there's not a big one from the location that is just north of there with probably five times the, the volume, my guess is that maybe the safety issue isn't as large a concern?
Got a better slide of where that car wash?
Right, and I guess, Ed, we'll take a look at that. Is it, is it closer than what the... the, I don't know what, what the name of that car wash is.
Sorry, the service, service entrance is here. As a matter of fact, Dave, do you know where the car wash is internal?
Sir, can you come up and identify yourself at the podium?
I'm Dave Stava from Ingleside, Illinois. I'm the project agent representing Dorian Boyland's interest. With me today is Tim Grayman, the construction manager, also representing Mr. Boyland's interest.
Great. So, and your, your estimation of where the actual facility inside the building is?
Outside.
It's on the south side.
You have to point at that screen.
You gotta point it. That's why they call it a pointer. Right about, right, excuse me, right about within there. Okay? Now, what's, what, and I understand the gentleman's concerns, and I can't reiterate enough that this is a private car wash. And even maybe, I would say, half the car washes that happen in here are going to be detailed in here. So, although they're going to be sponged off as well with what they call a California squeegee, if you've ever seen one. So, most cars will be, I would say, up to maybe 75%, 80% of the cars are going to be bone dry by the time they leave the lots.
Well, sir, well, percentage is, the cars won't even leave your property.
Correct.
Do you have a feel for how much that actually entails?
How many cars are going to leave your property?
How many cars are you actually just bringing in and putting them right back on the lot?
I would say, I would say, a majority of them, yeah. I mean, I, again, I mean, this is for somebody that comes in, you know, gets serviced done. That person might be picking up their car later on in the day. The car is washed, it's sat on the lot for a while, it'll be squeegeed off. You know, we can ensure that operations understands this, that, you know, that there is a concern to do with, you know, what I believe the gentleman was talking about, water leaving that, that drive there.
That's 27th Street.
Correct.
I'm confident that that will not be an issue.
Yeah. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Second call for commentary in the audience. Arden, I see you're on the list for this one. Oh, sorry. Catherine points out, different item. All right, third and final call then for commentary from the public. With that, we will close the public portion of the public hearing and open it up to questions, commentary from the council. Everybody, Steve?
I just want to make sure there's either not a typographical error on anything, or if there isn't. I see it says All-Star Buick GMAC. Is GM, to me, GMAC was the financial arm of GM. So, would it be All-Star Buick GMC? And if it is GMC, then there's just some typos here, which is not a big deal, I gather. But if it is GMC, are we limiting the dealership to passenger-type GMC vehicles and nothing heavy duty and freight-related?
There's no limitation on vehicle type, and we can certainly check the application to verify that the applicant is correct in this instance.
The letter from Boyland Auto Group says GMAC, so maybe if there was a typo, it just got carried over, or it's really GMAC. That's the question. That's all I have.
Sir, do you have any, any clarification on that, in terms of the product line officially?
We've always recognized it as GMAC. GMC, I grant you, is a large corporation, but they're also under the flag of GMAC.
Very well, thank you.
So, you're talking about the same.
We expect the full spectrum of autos and...
Tomato, tomato, it's the same thing.
All right, thank you. Just wanted to make sure.
Any other questions, commentary? Who's he good? Planning commission meeting was fairly straightforward. We looked from the minutes. Mike? Who else? Great, then we'll move on to item number 11. Consider ordinance 2900, an ordinance to approve a conditional use permit for automotive sales and service in a private car wash facility on the properties at 7,008, 7018 South 27th Street and 2,500 West Rossin Avenue. Need a motion on that? Or actually, any, any discussion on that item in particular? All right, then I'll take a motion, please.
Oracle move that the council adopt ordinance number 2900, an ordinance to approve a conditional use permit for automotive sales and service, and a private car wash facility on the properties at 7,008 and 7,018 South 27th Street and 2,500 West Rossin Avenue.
Dukenyak second.
Call.
Alderman, Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Great. Items 12, 13, and 14 are historically and typically held until the next first meeting in May. I anticipate that to be the case, Melissa. So, we need to officially make motions to hold all three? Okay. So, we'll take, and can we do all three at once, or need individual motions? All right. So, if that's copacetic with everyone here, we'll need a motion that can carry actually all three and move to hold until the first common council meeting in May for the automatic and mayor appointments?
Guzekowski makes a motion to hold items 12, 13, and 14 until the May 1st, 2018 council meeting.
Dukenyak second.
Call.
Alderman, Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye. Item number 15, the always dreaded and eventful consideration of the official celebrations committee trick-or-treat date. This has caused more controversy than...
Yes, it has.
Should be, but it is, it is what it is. So, the official recommendation by the celebrations committee is to designate Sunday, October 28th, 2018, from 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. is the official city of Oak Creek trick-or-treat time. Any comments, questions? None? Wait until the phone calls come, right?
What, what, what issues have there been in the past?
Oh, boy.
I'm a rookie at this guy's side.
I mean, let, let me know.
We will.
All right. Okay, we will.
We'll talk afterwards.
No commentary, we'll take a motion on item number 15.
All right.
Rich, you make the motion then.
We'll, huh?
There you go.
We run out of candy at our house? All right, I will. Dukenyak move to concur with the celebrations commission and designate Sunday, October 28th, 2018, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. as the official city of Oak Creek trick-or-treat.
Oracle second.
Call.
Alderman, Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye. Item number 16, is the motion approved to, the April 11th, 2018 vendor summary, the port, summary report, in a, for a total of $292,538.91. Questions of Bridget, or any other comments or concerns? Uneventful.
Mind numbing.
Mind numbing, yeah. Great. Well, we'll entertain a motion then on item number 16, the vendor summary report.
Oracle move to approve the April 11th, 2018 vendor summary report in a combined total of $292,538.91.
Dukenyak second.
Call.
Alderman, Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Engineering, item number 17, to consider resolution 11929-041718, approving the special privilege permit submitted by Pizza, for Pizza Man, 7974 South Main Street for the use of the parklet in the public right-of-way along South Town Square Way from April 23rd, 2018, to October 15th, 2018. Mike?
Thank you, Ken. So, this is the application for the special privilege permit that is required by code for the, the parklet, which is the wood deck structure that is constructed in the, the two parking lanes out on the, the Town Square Drive frontage of Pizza Man. And council, may recall that last year, the, the initial permit was issued, it was kind of late in the season, actually not late in the season when the permit was issued, but then they had to finish their design and their construction. And so, basically, this, this parklet did get put in place. I think they probably got two months of use out of it before they disassembled it and stored it for the winter. So, as you can see in the graphics, it's, it's kind of an impressive structure. And last year, due to the tardiness of it being constructed, did not have the plantings on it. So, I think it's going to look a lot nicer this year. And last year, a lot of it was kind of a learning curve for them to, to get this thing to fit and to meet all of our requirements. And so, hopefully, they have a successful year. So, they, they expect to have, you know, a full five and a half to six months' use out of the parklet this year. They have submitted everything that they need to on the permit application, certificate of insurance, the city indemnification, the various maintenance requirements that are part of the agreement, and, and of course, the, the fee that goes along with, with the permit. So, that is all in order. Our recommendation is that the permit get issued.
Thank you. Comments, questions, Mike, or anybody else? Great.
Is the, is the plan to put it up right of way on April 23rd, or is, are you waiting till the weather?
They have to wait for the snow to stop, so it might be May 23rd.
Could be June.
Who's he? Anybody else, Steve? All right, great. We'll take a motion on item number 17.
Oracle move that the council adopt resolution number 11929-041718, approving the special privilege permit for the use of the parklet in the public right-of-way along South Town Square Way from April 23rd, 2018, to October 15th, 2018, submitted for Pizza Man, 7974 South Main Street.
Dukenyak second.
Call.
Alderman, Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye. Item number 18 is the, consider resolution 11930-041718, approving an agreement between the cities of Oak Creek and South Milwaukee, outlining responsibilities for a shared project for improvement to the intersection of Milwaukee and Nicholson. Mike?
So, this is a, a project that's been in the works for several months, maybe a year and a half or so, as we've been monitoring traffic on Nicholson Avenue, also known as Pennsylvania Avenue on the Oak Creek side, traffic volumes, traffic performance, as this two-lane road remains a busy, shared road with the city of South Milwaukee. So, back in 2016, council authorized just a joint coordinated effort between Oak Creek and South Milwaukee to do a traffic study of this roadway. And there were, there were some observations that came out of that, of course. One, which was a little surprising, I think, for both communities, that there was not a urgent need for additional lanes, at least not in the near future. There was a recommended section that is foreseen, could work for this roadway, that is even something less than two lanes in each direction, what is known as a two-way left turn lane in, in the middle, travel lanes on the outside. And that accommodates all the turning movements onto the side streets. But more than anything in what we're talking about today is, is one thing that was identified as a more immediate need, and that is the performance of the intersection of Milwaukee Avenue and Pennsylvania. And that is kind of a main roadway into South Milwaukee. There are a lot of side streets into, into South Milwaukee, fewer on, on the Oak Creek side, but Milwaukee Avenue is kind of a main stretch. So, that intersection does see delays in the morning rush hour and in the evening rush hour. And so, Oak Creek and, and South Milwaukee, our respective engineering departments looked at that and put together a conceptual plan. I've got that up on the board there, that would alleviate the, the, these, these rush hour delays. And it's not an extensive plan. As you can see, it basically adds a lane onto the east side, the South Milwaukee side of Pennsylvania Avenue. They have plenty of road right-of-way existing, so no need to acquire any right-of-way. But what that does is, it provides a through lane in each direction and a southbound left turn lane onto Milwaukee Avenue, which is really the biggest relief for this intersection. So, that provides safety for vehicles that are queued up, ready to take that left turn, but yet they're waiting for northbound traffic to clear. And then there is no backup of traffic that wants to continue southbound. And then on the Milwaukee, from the, the eastbound approach, excuse me, the westbound approach from the east out of South Milwaukee, really just some slight modifications to their parking lane, which they do have on the far north lane. They're going to pull that back, and that will allow for a dedicated right turn lane and a dedicated left turn lane, so that there is nobody waiting while there's a vehicle waiting for traffic to clear. So, it's not traffic signals, purely stop control on the Milwaukee Avenue side entering Pennsylvania, but adequate lane widths, adequate tapers. And so, that is the proposal. This was something that was talked about. At budget time, Oak Creek has budgeted its share of the, of the funding. South Milwaukee has done the same. This agreement is also going before South Milwaukee's council. I'm not sure if that is this evening, but it is, it is this week sometime. So, that's basically it. The agreement provides that Oak Creek is going to be the lead agency in the design, which the design really is 90% complete at this point. We will be ready to go out to bids next week at this time. And then Oak Creek would also be the lead agency in contracting for the construction, the paying of the bills, the construction inspection, and then invoicing half of all of those costs to South Milwaukee.
Thank you, Mike. Questions, comments from Mike?
Mike, if you can...
Sorry.
Refresh my memory. You, you mentioned there was a certain amount of, or a certain amount set aside in the budget for the project. What was that amount, Mike? And, and is there a cost estimate for this project, the total project?
The Oak Creek's share that we have reserved is $80,000.
Oh, geez, okay.
Yeah. And South Milwaukee has, has got a similar amount, by understanding. So, we expect that that should cover the cost.
Mike, I don't remember. Where's the relationship to Milwaukee Avenue, the, that access road to that apartment complex?
That is the, the new apartment complex on the Oak Creek side?
Yes.
That is down at Manitowoc Avenue, so I would say that's about a half a mile to the south.
Okay, thank you.
Just some clarification on the plans here. It looks like the majority of the widening and the work is going to be on the South Milwaukee side. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And then is there any improvement that's going to take place on the Oak Creek side? Any sidewalks or anything of that nature?
No sidewalks at this time.
Okay.
You know, there is, we, we are parallel to this effort. We are, are reviewing an, an expansion plan for this whole stretch. And, but that is, again, not on the immediate radar. It is in our long-range plans as we look to budgets, you know, four, five years down the road. But not anything that's going to happen real soon. In fact, the, the concept plan, if you were to lay it on with this intersection plan, that all lines up. So, this proceeds, we would not need to completely re-tear up this, this roadway at this intersection anyways. We'll tear everything else up, that's what we do, but...
During your, during your traffic counts, did, I mean, is this traffic coming from South Milwaukee to Oak Creek, or is this traffic leaving Oak Creek going to South Milwaukee? I, I'm just curious on the rationale with the fifty-fifty split, because it, just, when you're looking at the map, it seems like everything's happening more so on the South Milwaukee side. And then we're also the lead agency, and we're doing all the billing. I mean, maybe they don't have the manpower for that, I, I don't know, but I'm just curious on the rationale.
Yeah, uh, the, you know, the volumes are, are the volumes. And, um, I, I don't have those in front of me now, but of, of course, as they, as they check volumes on, on side roads that come in, uh, Milwaukee Avenue is, is the, the most heavily traveled. Again, that's kind of the main drag in, into South Milwaukee.
Right.
Um, you know, as far as this, this shared effort, you know, we, we've done the, the bulk of the, the engineering. Um, you know, South Milwaukee has been integral, you know, they've been, they've been involved, uh, all along the way. Uh, so there's no disagreements in this design. Um, again, we will invoice them for, um, uh, fair cost shares on, on the project.
I just, I guess I would.
Yeah.
Want to make sure it's not at anything more than fifty percent.
Correct. I mean, that is our intention. I mean, there, there's give and take here. We, we did, uh, a lot of engineering. Um, they are having the road moved closer to their residence.
Yeah.
Um, and, um, we're fortunate that they have all that road right-of-way. If this, if, if South Milwaukee said, look, this isn't fair, we're gonna have the center line of the road as it is today, the center line of this expanded intersection, that might kill the project, because we've got homes that are very close on our side.
Uh-huh.
Um, so, you know, that will factor into the, into the conceptual design and, and the give and take, the cooperative effort, all, all of that. So.
Thank you.
Mike, um, I don't remember, if you said it was DOT or the county had given you kind of, this is, you know, good for how many, how, how, how long in the future do they think this solution is?
This, this was the, uh, traffic study that, that we had done, and we had hired a, a, a traffic, uh, engineering firm that they've done, they've done a lot of work. So no, it wasn't the county. Um, and they did, they did the traffic counts. The traffic counts they did, uh, we do have traffic counts for, through the DOT, and, um, that, that all seemed to be in line. There was, there was no major disagreements in the numbers, so, um.
And how far do they think you're, they're just gonna get us out in the future in this?
Um, I, I guess I'd have to look again. I, I know that it wasn't even, like, even in, like, the ten-year forecast. And, and when we talk about that with South Milwaukee, um, they get a little nervous about that. Um, they.
Inside of ten years or outside?
It's my understanding that they are looking for this road to be expanded, um, more in the short term.
So our, our traffic studies projects it will not be necessary to do the full expansion for ten-plus years potentially?
That's correct, yes.
No, I mean, given that, I, because, you know, since I've been around, I mean, I, there's been, you know, speculation that this was a full four, four-lane expansion to kind of match what happened north of it, which was a big ticket from what I recall.
Yes, it was. We, and we had, uh, significant funding, uh.
Significant property acquisitions and, uh, some, from that standpoint, I, I don't know, you know, how far, you know, when that happens, when it goes. This can actually, relatively speaking, be considered a down payment on, because essentially, it's a reusable piece of road for, for a potential future project.
Yeah, and, and even if this had to be, uh, if this had to be phased, um, the, the, the busier stretch of, of, uh, Pennsylvania Avenue is from Milwaukee Avenue to Rossin. Uh, the traffic counts are lagging south of that. Now, with the apartments, um, coming online, we're, we're gonna monitor this road basically continually going forward. And so we'll, we'll, we'll know right away if, if, if things are changing appreciably.
You'd think most people would feel a lot of stress.
If we had to phase it, uh, you know, we could do, do an expansion from Milwaukee Avenue to, to Rossin. Apart, the, the, the volumes have, uh, traffic volumes have leveled off, uh, we suspect, because people do not have to travel north on Pennsylvania to get to Rossin, to get to the interstate, they're, they're, they're driving on Draxel Avenue to get to the, you know, to the newer interchange there, so.
Makes sense for now. Anything else, Mike? Anybody else? Great. Nothing else, we'll take then a motion on, um, item number eighteen.
Kirkowski make a motion to council adopt resolution number one-one-nine-three-zero-dash-zero-four-one-seven-one-eight. Resolution approving an agreement between the cities of Oak Creek and South Milwaukee outlining responsibilities for a shared project for improvements to the intersection of Milwaukee, Nicholson Avenues.
Oracle second.
Go call.
Alderman Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye. Great. Item number nineteen is to consider resolution one-one-nine-three-one-dash-zero-four-one-seven-one-eight accepting dedication of the public improvements and release from the development agreement for the William Garrow Project tax keys as listed. Doug, or is that Mike? Sorry.
I did. Um, so, uh, council noticed that items nineteen and twenty are, are, are very similar in nature. Um, uh, item nineteen here is a, deals with a development agreement that was, um, entered back in, in, it looks like ninety-eight, nineteen ninety-eight. It was for water main installation, which, uh, has been in and, and operational for, going on two decades. And this development agreement, uh, for some reason, did not get closed out. Uh, and my understanding that there's a, a real estate transaction uncovered this, um, and so this needs to be closed out as a matter of, you know, housekeeping or whatever you want to call it on the, on that transaction. Needs to happen.
So, general housekeeping?
Yes.
Steve, anything? Anybody else? Take a motion then.
Kirkowski make, uh, motion to council adopt resolution number one-one-nine-three-one-dash-zero-four-one-seven-one-eight. A resolution accepting dedication of the public improvements and release from the development agreement for the William Garrow Project tax keys as listed.
Oracle second.
Go call.
Alderman Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Great, thanks. Item number twenty is to consider the other part of this housekeeping is resolution one-one-nine-three-two dash zero-four-one-seven-one-eight accepting dedication of the public improvements and release from the development agreement for the RCB Worldwide Inc. CSM Project Tax Key eight-one-four-nine-nine-six.
And yes, this is, uh, similar to the, the previous item. This is for, uh, public storm sewer, uh, that was required under development agreement, uh, signed back in nineteen ninety-nine. And this is for the property at, uh, two-seven-five East Draxel Avenue.
Any questions, comments? Great, motion?
Kirkowski make a motion to council adopt resolution number one-one-nine-three-two-dash-zero-four-one-seven-one-eight. A resolution accepting dedication of the public improvements and release from the development agreement for the RCB Worldwide Inc. CSM Project.
Oracle second.
Go call.
Alderman Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Great. Next, we have License Committee. Um, Steve, before I turn over to you, Arden has, uh, commentary on this item. We'll give him, give that to him first.
Arden Digner, eighty-five forty South Pennsylvania Avenue. I suggest that you scratch items number five and eight on this report, because these are by Oak Creek employees and volunteers, in many cases duplicating. And I've got a list of, of these duplicating events that are, uh, listed. Uh, there's a number of them listed for June sixteenth. There's others listed for, uh, the June thirteenth, duplicating items that businesses are already supplying. Now, we could look at this in a number of different ways. And the first thing I'd like to point out to you is our Oak Creek Health Fest report for the Oak Creek Health Department on page, and they are, this is, this is the report, on, online, no doubt. Community Health Improvement Plan Purpose and Progress, that the health, yes, Oak Creek, two oh one four to two oh one nine, the Health Department and community partners identified areas to improve over the next five years. And one of them is, the first one is reduce alcohol and drug abuse. Each of these areas is achievable, measurable objectives and strategies to complete no later than December thirty-first of nineteen. Now, let's take a look at their focus area to reduce alcohol and drug abuse by the Health Department. And of course, we recognize opioid and alcohol abuse. The alcohol, the Oak Creek Health Department by December thirty-first nineteen aims to increase alcohol education. Down below, it says, what can we do as a community-wide system? Offer riding alcohol reduction and drug abuse activities and support as well as alcohol-free events. This is the Health Department. In other words, it's, what, what's occurring now, when we're competing with businesses with paid Oak Creek employees and volunteers, ha, paying the licenses for these, uh, activities. Oh, they, they increase money. They'll have money. That's what I heard the tourism commission. They'll increase money. Oh, sure, so will a will tax that the county wanted to propose. So, uh, our, my, my time is up, but I have a lot more comments on, on this, uh, uh, my, my sister died of alcohol abuse, drowned in a bathtub. So why should we allow, to me, it's similar to collecting brush and trash from our property and by the forestry department and dumping it on a small side street. And then the, the people that are not familiar with these problems run into it. Some people getting snagged, others don't. Large drivers, large logs are taken care of by the, uh, suppliers. But why does Oak Creek have to have, a, a, as, as an example, have, then require the street department to pick up this bunch of stuff that's deposited? That's what's happening now. We're competing with these licenses from, uh, four, six, from five, six, seven, and eight with businesses and eliminating alcohol-free events at the Vista Park.
Thank you for your comments. Steve?
Um, I just, for the record, if it's important, that with regards to the events that are on this, uh, common council report with regards to the License Committee, uh, we, we had, with the exception of the beer gardens at, uh, Lake Vista Park, we did have a beer garden at Aben Shyne. We did have the Summer Salsas Festival, the food truck, uh, last year. And, um, normally, it would be the case, if I was, as chairman of the License Committee, if there were adverse issues from previous events, uh, I would have been, and the committee would have been advised of, of such issues so that we could take it under consideration. Um, I received no feedback from, uh, Oak Creek Police Department with regards to any of these events. I mean, that's not to say somebody didn't consume too much beer, but, um, there were no adverse, uh, reports received that, uh, uh, there were problems. So those are my comments. Um, we do have the common council report. Does any, everybody have a chance to look at it? Does anybody else have any additional comments with regards to what's on the report? Okay, have, since there are none. Kirkowski make a motion to grant the various license requests as listed on the April seventeen, two thousand eighteen License Committee Report.
Dukenyak second.
Go call.
Alderman Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye. Great, motion for adjournment? Sorry, Tom. Well, recognize the fire chief?
This is a formality or not, since South Milwaukee has their own independent street name, and our side of the street is Pennsylvania. The only motion was made for Milwaukee and Nicholson. You have to include Pennsylvania as part of the project or not?
It may be semantics. It, the, the. Yeah, it, it may be. Um, the, uh, agreement itself recognizes Nicholson Avenue, uh, uh, parentheses, also known as Pennsylvania Avenue. Um, it just got wordy to put Nicholson slash Pennsylvania every time in the agreement. I think we're covered.
We're good.
Uh, referred to the attorney.
Did we have a second on it?
I got, I got one question before we adjourn.
Sorry.
I didn't, I'm sorry, I apologize. I didn't think of it, uh, but this Pizza Man issue. Um, in the, in the event that there's, there would be an injury or an accident, because we're extending this thing into those parking spaces, who has the liability? City be liable, or is Pizza Man liable for that, for that temporary structure?
Uh, as part of the, um, as part of their special privilege permit, they have, uh, secured the insurance and have indemnified the city, uh, in that, in that regard.
Alright, thank you. Good.
Do you have a motion to adjourn?
Kirkowski make a motion to adjourn.
Oracle second.
Go call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Great, thank you all.